It's 5:30. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting for the City of Emeryville on January 29th. Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Bauders.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Here.
And Mayor Medina.
Here. Do we have a motion to approve the final agenda?
I move that we approve the final agenda.
Good move from Member Donahue.
Second.
Second from Member Martinez.
Councilmember Bauders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. All right. Any ex parte communications to report? All right, seeing none. Can I get public comment for consent items or items not on the agenda? Okay. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion from Member Bauders.
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Pats.
Councilmember Bauders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. All right, item 7.1, I believe we have something from the city manager.
We do. Thank you, Mayor Medina. Item 7.1 is a special presentation that we would like to share with you this evening, highlighting your city staff. And we would welcome you to sit in the audience if you'd like to see it on the bigger screen. It'll show up on your computer screens if you prefer to stay at the dais, but you're welcome to look at it from the floor. I would like to specifically thank our city clerk, Sherry Hertz, who did this work and is an artist among us, as you will soon see. But this is just a little overview of the work that your city staff does for you and the community of Emeryville every day. And we wanted to take a moment, as we embark on this goal-setting process for the next fiscal year, to remind ourselves of the work that happens in this community every day. So with that...
All right, so I'm Navarre, and I work in the Planning Division. I'm one of the first people that people contact in the city if they want to do some sort of development. I really enjoy working here because I always get to learn something new from different people and different perspectives.
So right now, we're under Powell Street. Currently, we're removing graffiti from the pillars under Powell with the Soda Blaster. The Soda Blaster shoots out baking soda media. And what it actually does is it removes paint without indenting the actual concrete pillars.
One of my favorite parts of working for the city is its flexibility and its ability to change. When I wanted to overhaul our encroachment permit process and add it to our existing Trackett software program, I was met with total support and enthusiasm. Public Works is now better able to review encroachment permits within a timely manner. Its success inspires me to continue to improve processes at the city that increase staff efficiency and provide better service to the community.
In the Environmental Programs group of Public Works, we work on a lot of things that impact the whole community. One of those things is energy. As you can see here, we have solar on City Hall. We also have it on three other buildings. For more than half of the city's buildings have solar. And we currently are working on a plan to make all of the city's facilities self-sustaining off the grid. Another thing we've worked on is waste. And we've kept the community's waste below 2010 levels despite large residential and commercial growth. The community moves forward together because the team here moves forward together.
Even though I have worked here in Emeryville for just a little over six months, I take great pride in working for the city. I am proud that Emeryville takes care of its staff, such as ensuring a proper work-life balance, providing staff activities throughout the year, and having a culture of transparency, friendship, respect, camaraderie, and continuous self-development.
I'm proud to work in Emeryville because this is a place with world-changing companies, with risk-taking and entrepreneurship, creativity happening all around us. And because this is a place where that's the culture that built this city, it attracts the kind of people that are attracted to that sort of environment. And so my coworkers also are some of the most skilled people I've ever had the opportunity to work with. There isn't another place like this anywhere. So that's why I enjoy working in Emeryville.
There are two things that come to mind when I think about pride that I feel being an employee of the City of Emeryville, particularly with the police department. As a police communications dispatcher, I'm responsible for getting important information from reporting parties to relate to my officers. So that's very gratifying. I think I can speak for all the dispatchers in records and communication. The second part is more of the development that I play in training new dispatchers. That's really gratifying to me because you take a person who has no knowledge of law enforcement and you're able to help in the development of that person become a dispatcher.
We have a great time here at the police department in building bridges with our community members and providing a service that we feel is above and beyond what law enforcement generally provides in the Bay Area.
At Public Works, we take pride in making the parks a little nicer, making the roads a little smoother, and making the city as a whole more beautiful. There's nothing more satisfying than to finish a project knowing that you've helped make an impact to improve people's daily lives.
I'm a lead teacher over here at Emeryville Child Development Center, or ECBC. A lot of these teachers here have been here for over 15 years, some 20, 25. And that's really good to want to work at a center because, you know, it shows longevity. It shows that, you know, people are happy, satisfied, content at a center, and that's not always the case. And we're making one great, happy family.
Okay, so my favorite part of just coming to work and just being a lifeguard here would have to be our summer program because in between that, we are breeding new lifeguards, teaching people how to properly teach. The best part is probably seeing everybody graduate or come outside in their red for the first time, where we're all like, "Ooh, we got fresh lifeguards, fresh lifeguards." We're just a big family. We support one another. So, I mean, I wouldn't want to do anything else besides come here every day.
Well, my name is Brian, and I work here at the Emeryville Senior Center. And for me, it's a wonderful experience. There's not too many places like this where there's a community of people who all kind of have a similar goal, and that goal is to stay connected with other people with similar interests and similar ideals and goals. And here at the Emeryville Senior Center, I get to come and basically play every day.
I was up on the roof.
Do we have public comment on that item?
Thank you for your indulgence. Just was a lot of fun to watch that and just to feel proud. For context, the idea for that actually came out of an all-staff meeting we had, actually, in this room in November. And we did an exercise, which is reflected in the report that you have in front of you for item 7.2. So, Madam Mayor, I could address 7.2 and 7.3 together, if you'd like that, as a lead-in to your discussion.
Great.
That would be acceptable?
That is totally acceptable.
So I plan to stand here to sort of be a point of, for you to direct your comments at, but mostly what we're interested in tonight, fundamentally what we're interested in tonight, is the council having a discussion about what your goals and priorities are for the upcoming year as we move into this next budget cycle. What are you interested in focusing on? What are you interested in having the staff focus our energies on? And for context, as I said, we had this all-staff meeting where we talked about strengths, vulnerabilities, challenges, and opportunities facing the organization. And one of the things that came through strikingly was everyone's pride in the work that they do here. And I'd only been on the job maybe, I don't know, five weeks at that point. So for me, it was just really heartwarming, exciting, a wonderful opportunity to be working with a team of people who feel so strongly about the work that they do and so proud of it. So the idea for the video came out of that. What you'll see in the report probably is not surprising to any of you. We're very proud of what we do. The organization is small, but that gives it its ability to be flexible and nimble, innovative in many ways, a lot fewer silos than a lot of other larger cities have. There's a lot of cross-departmental communication all the time, which I think lends to our strength. But with that size also comes the lack of redundancy in staffing. As we noted in the report, many people wear, people wear many hats. One person does one thing, and may be the only person who's competent in that core function. When someone leaves or retires, sometimes institutional memory walks out with them. It's hard for us to focus on moving to automated systems because we don't necessarily have the capacity to make time to do the upfront work for that. We also added a chart just for comparison in terms of population growth from 1997 to 2017. If you account for the reduction, the movement of the fire department into Alco Fire, Alameda County Fire Department, we've only added about 6.7 FTE in 20 years, while the population's grown by 78%. So we've kept a very lean and efficient staffing level while still maintaining, I think, high-quality services for this community, which is what we're here to do. The other thing that we identified in our staff discussion was Emeryville's reliance on relatively volatile sales tax, utility tax, business license tax, as opposed to the more stable property tax that many other cities have. Of course, our property tax goes to support our redevelopment bonds, which is also fundamentally important to how Emeryville has been able to grow. But we do need to maintain an awareness of that, and the staff is very aware of that. So what are the other revenue streams that we can look to? Cannabis taxes, as the council put on the ballot in November, is one opportunity for that. But we want to make sure that that's a stable recurring revenue source before we load recurring expenditures against it. And finally, the ever-present tension of continuing to provide excellent quality service responding to the community's needs while maintaining a fiscally responsible organization that has prudent staffing levels that we can support with competitive wages and benefits so that we can retain our excellent employees who are proud of doing the work. So that's a high-level summary of that report and that discussion. The next report on your agenda, 7.3, is our progress report on the goals that you adopted last March. So you adopted 10 goals. All of them have seen progress. Some of them have been completed, and several of them will continue on into the next fiscal year. So we attempted to give you a fairly high-level summary. And before I go any further, just want to emphasize that all of our department heads are here today to answer questions. If you have questions about any of the projects that are in this report, they are the ones who do all this work. I do not. They have the details more at hand, certainly, than I do. But if you have questions about anything that's in this report... But just to remind you, of course, the South Bay Front Bridge, yay, going to bid Thursday. Smile Friday, before the end of the week. That's one that we'll continue on into next year. The housing bond. So the bond itself, of course, was passed quite handsomely by the voters in June. Very exciting. The bond needs an expenditure plan, and then we have to sell the bonds and build the projects. So the next work is really that expenditure plan, and then the implementation of that, which will also continue into the next fiscal year. There's a series of active transportation safety projects, many of which have been completed. But you also recently added the 40th Street redesign that will continue on into next year. The art center, obviously, still in progress, but huge amount of progress made this last year getting into the exclusive rights to negotiate. Disaster preparedness. So we will recommend that that be included in your goals for next year because while we have made progress on this, we have more progress to make this year and into next year, culminating in training for you all, as well as a more robust participation in a regional exercise. Hopefully, we'll get to the place where that becomes a maintenance of effort, a line item of work. But for now, we think it needs to be retained as a goal. Parking management, in progress. We're coming back to you February 19th. I won't say anymore about that. Rail quiet zones, also in progress. As you know from your experience with the bridge, that involves an enormous amount of negotiation with our friends at the railroad. Revenue opportunities. The cannabis tax passed. It's being implemented as part of the business license tax, which doesn't mean that there aren't other revenue opportunities out there, but the primary one that was focused on in your goals had significant progress. You identified a communications director in your March goals, but the position was not ultimately funded in the budget that was adopted in, I guess it was adopted in September, but discussed in June. And then the Davenport Park improvements, that will also continue into next year, was the process to get the increased funding. Made huge progress on that this year, but the construction will move into next year. Correct? Yes. So that's the overview of the goals, priority projects that you identified last March. If you have any questions about any of those, we'd be happy to answer them.
Is there any public comment on that item before we get to discussion?
Good evening, Mayor Medina and councilmembers. I'm here to say hello and introduce our leadership, if you indulge me. I'm going to introduce them in the order that they are seated. Ken is our Public Works shop steward. He's been an employee for 29 years. We have Keely Nelson. She's City Hall steward. She's been here for four years. Amber Evans, vice president. She's been here for eight years. Navarre Oaks. She's chief steward. She's been here for five years. Adrian is the PST shop steward and has been over 25 years. Lastly, I'm sorry.
29.
29, thank you. And then lastly, we have Ose de Mongels. He is our local ACU union rep. The only thing I would like to add, other than introducing the leadership, is as you embark upon these goals and priorities and figure out your priorities for the next two years, looking at capital projects, improvement services, we are here to remind you that you should not forget or overlook to invest adequately in your human capital. We represent your human capital. We are the largest of the three unions in the city, and my entire membership is composed of worker bees and workhorses. Additionally, the one last thing I would like to bring to your attention is some data statistic that caught my eye in the staff report. 20 years ago, there was one employee for 45 residents. Today, it's one employee for 75 residents. If the electeds over the 20 years have been trying to tell their constituents that they are not for big government, then you have done an excellent job. We are a lean and mean staff here. And I think it is time for the council to look to their own house inside and see whether there will be adequate investments to treat us with fairness and justice in this round of fiscal years. I believe that fairness and justice is something that is dear to each and every one of you, as evidenced by a variety of policies that you have passed, including minimum wage and Fair Work Week. So with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right.
So Mayor, I took the liberty of preparing a sheet that's before you to perhaps guide the council in its discussion of priorities for the upcoming year. What we did was list some goal areas, that's in the dark blue column on the left, that we felt like the priority projects fell into in terms of large goals.
Right. Could we perhaps, we're still on 7.3, right?
Yep.
Could we see if there's any questions or discussion on the previous progress before we get into this year's goals? Does anyone have any questions or would like to discuss that progress report? All right, then let's move on.
Wait.
Yep.
I just want to thank the staff for all their work this past year.
Absolutely. And Sherry for that really lovely video. You did all that? Add video editing to your, like, list of skills. So impressive. All right, so let's go. Should we then start on 7.4?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is a chart to potentially help guide you in the discussion. One of the things that we wanted to note is that, as I noted as I was walking through the last year's goals, several of these projects will continue on into next year. So we wanted to list them under priority projects, as noted by an asterisk, as things that we know will continue. And then we tried to add things that we felt had already been identified and were essentially kicking off and likely to continue into the next year. So obviously, the bridge, the art center, quiet zones, parking management, and Davenport Park will all continue, in addition, 40th Street redesign. Put those in the area of improving quality of life and enhancing community connectivity. The next category would be producing and preserving affordable housing. We need to develop that expenditure plan I referenced earlier. And then also 4300 San Pablo, the RFQ-RFP that the council discussed a meeting or so ago. That process will continue on into next year. Ensuring the continuity of high-quality public services. Now, this is something that was not included in your goals last year, with the exception of disaster preparedness, but something that we'd like to bring to your attention. The fire services contract was extended through June of 2020. So that is something that we'll be needing to assess and move forward with this next year. Library services. The ECCL, when it was constructed, was anticipated to include a community library. And we need to refocus on that and figure out how we're going to address the question of library services. There's no outcome defined, but just the question deserves some attention. The remediation of the courtyard, as you know from your recent discussion of the Recognize Obligation Payment Schedule, is a key project that is attached to several other projects, including the development of affordable housing. Maintaining a prudent fiscal management of city resources, I would think, is an important goal. And the budget process that we're kicking off is part of that. And then finally, another goal area that might not have been directly addressed in the last round has to do with our city organization. As Miro just mentioned, our workers are how we serve our community. We all do that work. Cultivating a healthy organization and building capacity for excellent service. There are some items that could be perceived as administrivia but are actually quite important to our ability to become more efficient. Paperless workflow is a euphemism for electronic timesheets, which we don't have. Position control is a database that connects up budgeted positions with payroll so that we actually can tell you how many budgeted positions we have versus how many positions are filled right now without having to go through and manually do that. We don't have that. Open data is something that the Budget Committee has discussed, and we've been talking about. Multi-year contracts. Instead of coming back to you every year to renew every single contract and processing all of that paper, both for you and the staff, there is some room for efficiency there. And then finally, records maintenance. Should I talk about the boxes in the basement, or no? No, okay. But we need to get the boxes out of the basement.
We're dealing with that.
There's a process in place, but it deserves some renewed attention from the organization. So we tried to list the responsible departments in the final column so you could get a sense of who would be taking lead on that. We offer this for your consideration, and we're happy to hear your conversation, your discussion, and answer any questions you might have.
Great. Do we have any public comment on this item, council discussion of goals and priorities? All right, seeing none, let's get into it. I thought maybe we could start off, if everyone agrees, by going over last year's goals, priorities, seeing if there's anything we want to update or knock off the list, and then move into what we might want to add for this year. Does that work for everyone? Since Councilmember Bauders led us through this as mayor last year, I'd like to give you the opportunity to maybe get started on this with the South Bay Front Bridge. Any thoughts?
Other than the fact that I'm so grateful to the people who, behind the scenes, worked on this and endured every ask I made around that, I know that we're putting this out to bid on Friday, and we could have something in the ground or be in construction by the end of the year. I would just be curious to hear from staff. Breaking that between, and this is probably for Andrew, yeah, breaking that between the contract and bidding review process and then the construction component, how does the staff workload and capacity change between those two phases? So is it a continuous amount of work that's even, or is it different people on staff and a different... Will the workload go up or down when we change phases?
The workload from this point forward probably could remain, from existing full-time staff, about the same. My workload will go up and down. We get past the bidding process when we first start into the... We get past the bidding process when we first start into the construction phase. I'll be spending more time on it again. We'll be spending less time from our city attorney's office. I think I burned them out. So they'll get a bit of a break from it, hopefully, as long as we behave ourselves out there. And our temporary services employee who'll be working, he will be working a lot more. But then we'll also be engaged with, it's our construction, the contracted resources that we have, construction management will be very busy, but that's a contracted resource.
Do you have an updated timeline, assuming that the bidding process doesn't endure any snags? When, is it likely that we'll have a shovel in the ground in the fall?
Yes.
Is everyone okay with keeping this item on the top of the list?
Yes.
Yeah, that, I support that.
Yes.
Okay. There's the direction on that one. I think we've made a lot of phenomenal progress, and let's keep doing it till we have a bridge. Housing bond measure. Anyone want to comment on that?
Are you going off of her sheet or the sheet in?
I was going off of the priorities from last year and then seeing what we might want to add.
Awesome, thank you. So the things from last year, yeah, thank you. So following up on last year, I just agree that, I would just ask Christine, do you have a timeframe for when you wanted to begin the discussion on the expenditure plan? And what's the process with staff you're planning to undertake?
So, as you know, we had a recent announcement of a retirement. Catherine Furpo is retiring. We are grateful to her for how much time and love she's given the community, so we need to replace her in order to move that project forward. However, in the meantime, Chad has put out an RFQ for some services that we needed anyway. And we have started a discussion of the expenditure plan. So we will likely still be bringing forward discussions to the housing committee this spring, but it may take a little bit longer until we fill that position.
My only comment or feedback is that I would really prefer that the expenditure plan, the contracted people, we need to do whatever I get, but that the expenditure plan be guided by a staff person who's going to be here in the city and familiar with the city and the residents.
We 100% agree, and that's why we'd like to wait to fill that position before we really finalize anything.
I support that.
Maybe we could update this to remove the bond measure part of it and put in creating expenditure plan, finding adequate staffing, and then moving into implementation.
I support that.
Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments on that one? All right. Active transportation, safety. You know, Scott, you've served on transportation with me for most of last year. Do you have any thoughts on what we've got here and how we might want to update this item?
It's just that as our city gets denser, the importance of pedestrian and bicycle interconnectedness in our city will also increase in importance, and that we just have to keep up with our improvements in this department. And we just have areas where our connectivity just doesn't feel so good from a pedestrian viewpoint. And, you know, we started to do an inventory last year where we walked from the peninsula into the, I mean, from the way out beyond Watergate into the center core of our city. And that informed me and a lot of other people who did the walk that we have missing pieces. And I think we just, as a goal, I would like it if we would look at our city as a whole for pedestrian and bicycle connectivity and have that be a real goal, to have that be a map with moving parts being checked off as connected.
You know, I 100% agree with you. We had started that process with you, and we're continuing it into transportation now. I would second that. I would really like to see that, a look at multimodal connectivity be its own item, and also remove the items that we have completed and ticked off from this list, which, great job, Public Works. Video detection, the pavement rehabilitation, and the pilot bikeway are all phenomenal upgrades.
And the Greenway crossing, those are still upcoming?
Yes, so that's spring, summer? Andrew?
Construction, summer.
Okay.
So that'll carry over for a little bit.
Yeah, I'm fine with keeping it on here until it's done, but then adding in-
Keep the Greenway crossings until they're done.
Yeah, adding in multimodal connectivity as its own item.
And the bonus project.
Don't forget our bonus section.
Oh, scroll down, yes. Traffic signals-
The two traffic signals and the mid-block crossing on San Pablo, all also coming this summer, fall.
Nice. It's an exciting subject.
Yeah. Public Works added a bonus section for all you other directors.
Gold star to Andrew. All right, so does that capture our comments for this? All right, art center. Let's talk about the art center.
Yeah, so I just, city attorney's office, how long will we be in the exclusive negotiating agreement, negotiation phase, do we think?
May.
May?
May.
Till May? And then at that point, presuming we have an agreement that council can vet and vote on, what would, the process would turn over to Charlie at that point?
The process is already being led by Chad.
Yeah.
Oh, Chad.
Chad and Emmy in economic development and housing are leading that project.
Okay.
Emmy is the project manager, under Chad's supervision.
Okay.
It will have to-
It will ultimately get to-
Well, it'll have to go to the planning commission for entitlements, and, you know, then on to construction.
I mean, I think, I feel like we made incredible progress on this last year. I'm really grateful to the staff and the council for working through the vision for how to move that with the public process for it, and I think we are just at the staff implementation phase before we get to construction. So I think it makes sense to keep it on here to get updates, if others agree.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay. Disaster preparedness, you had asked that we keep this item on, and can you specifically talk about what progress you think still needs to be made? You mentioned this.
So we're working with Alameda County Fire Department. Lori and Lisa are here. If you have more specific questions, Lori's been leading the charge on this quite well. We, the Alco Fire Department is offering emergency operations center trainings, I'm trying to de-jargonize, EOC, trainings each month for the first six months of the calendar year, and we have staff assigned to go to each of those. What those trainings are is to familiarize our staff with their role in the emergency operations center. Should the bad thing happen, this is what your role is, and sort of refresh our education around those things, ultimately culminating in our participation in the next, is it still called Golden Guardian?
It's gonna be the Great Shakeout.
The Great Shakeout, in the fall. The other thing we're doing is we're refreshing our space at the fire station on Hollis, which is our emergency operations center, and Lori's been working with Public Works on that to kind of reset that space and make it a little more usable as a modern, more modern-day EOC. So there are some important things that need to be done, including community preparedness. So there are CERT trainings in March and personal emergency preparedness trainings that are also offered with our partners at Alco Fire. So it's not just an internal-focused training, it's also getting the community re-engaged in disaster preparedness as well. And then we need to come to you all and have a training with the council about your roles and responsibilities when we activate the EOC, the emergency operations center.
Any questions or comments about this item?
Got into it.
Yep, let's do it. Keep it on there. All right. Has, are there any parts of this that can be taken off the goal to update the city emergency operations plan? Has that been done?
The EOP's not done yet.
No, because I think we were going to table it for this year.
Okay. Okay, so we'll leave all that on there. All right, parking management, coming back to us next month, or in March, right?
February 19th.
February 19th, that's right, next month. I'd recommend we keep that on there until we have something implemented.
I agree.
I agree.
Yep.
Yes.
Rail safety and quiet zones.
Well, we got one railroad thing done, why not start another one, right? I know I made your day when we did that.
Excellent.
So, yeah, what's the, are we still on, did we get an extension beyond the, with our state CTC grant money beyond June for having everything approved in terms of design so we could implement the money? I know that was a thread in a needle, sort of thing.
We don't have the extension yet, but we expect it.
Oh, that's, and do, how long will it be? Will it be till just the fall, do we think?
I'm not sure.
How long did we ask?
Well, we haven't officially, we haven't officially, we have to wait until we get closer to the actual, what, do you remember what meeting it is, Amber?
June.
The, I think, June, May.
CTC meets in May.
Yeah, May. And so we can't, we can't actually make the full ask till then.
But the county is helping us, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we've had, and there is understanding, we have a telephone conversation with the railroad tomorrow with their regional engineer from Roseville, and we hope we'll learn a lot more. But they've had some major staffing changes and some other issues, and are not exactly in favor of our initial plan. They would love to see actual closures instead of just the-
The staffing got worse?
Theirs did. They did nationwide, they had a whole purge of a particular position, which now they're hiring some of those people back and doing so with contracts. So the big behemoth has gotten even a little bit slower. So that's understood at both ACTC and CTC, so I don't think that we're going to lose the funding because of that. It's exactly understood what's going on, and we're making progress the best we can with the railroad, so.
I would ask that this stay on, mostly because although the county is super supportive of us and has been since we took this on in the sprint of a grant we did in January, and I thank council for supporting that request, it does have match money attached to it, and those are budget-sensitive items at the county level, and so I just want to encourage that we allow staff to work on this this year to ensure that we don't trip up and lose what really was a gift, because a lot of other cities sought this money and didn't get it.
To keep, to keep this money, we're going to have to remain active and stay after it, otherwise it will go away.
Yeah, I agree. So I would ask that we keep this on the list.
I really agree with that. I've just heard things about this reduction of noise for rail being so positive in other communities that have done it. Unexpected positive property value, quality of life improvements occur if we can get this. So I really think it's important.
A lot of, a lot of social, educational, health benefits for children in particular, so I'm a big fan of keeping this if we can.
I concur wholeheartedly. I guess this one's staying on. Everyone good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Revenue opportunities, cannabis tax. Nailed it.
Done.
Other ongoing.
I have a question about that. So there's a note here about the CDTFA and implementing the Wayfair decision. I'm just wondering if those taxes are going to be based on where goods are delivered or per capita? I know we don't know what the numbers are, but just wondering what the formula is, or...
It's going to be based on sale of tangible goods for delivery into California.
So, but then how is that distributed into cities? Is it based on where the goods are being delivered?
It should be that way, and some maybe through the county pool.
Okay.
To follow up then, so it's not a point of sale?
It's, it's, depends on what it is, right? If it's used tax, right? And, you know, the items are delivered into California, we get the sales tax here, such as big item equipments.
So let me ask two different hypotheticals. We have a dispensary that sells a product to a person, and the person lives in Arinda. Does the, the tax revenue happens here because the point of sale is here?
Yeah, point of sale's still here.
So what if a person orders something from a distributor online, and it, they've never come here to purchase it, but it's sent somewhere else?
So you mean like, you know, somebody ordered online and-
Like the Wayfair decision to Diane's question, I think, is, that's one of the challenges that we're trying to address, is, is there any situation where a product that's produced here or is packaged here or sent from a distribution locus here going to have, is that any portion of those tax revenues potentially going to go to another jurisdiction? I think that's the question we're trying to answer.
That should not be the case.
And what's coming in, too?
So Wayfair is coming in.
Right.
You're asking what's going out.
Right.
Right. I just want to make sure that we're not potentially set up to have, kind of Glazer ran the whole thing last year to try to change the whole formula for that.
Running it again.
He's running it again. And so I just want to make sure with all these changes to point of sale and who gets the benefit of it, and the consumer versus the people who've created the job, right, the locus for the job, because that's one of the big issues here. I just want to make sure we don't have a situation of a percentage of money that's not coming to us.
No, the Wayfair decision does not have that impact. Yeah.
Okay. Is that your understanding, too?
I didn't have an understanding before tonight, but now, yes.
That's, we're good on that?
But with regard to that forward-going, obviously, it's something that we need to pay attention to with our lobbyists and make sure that any of the legislation that's being proposed doesn't have that negative impact. That's what I'm hearing as a focus. Wayfair benefits us by the distribution of incoming goods, but what you're talking about is we don't want to lose any point of sale that would be allocated to Emeryville right now.
I think we're saying we want all of the money.
Okay.
Me, too.
Right, because that was the case where people were purchasing in other places, and the benefit was going to the place they were purchasing from. That's the point I'm trying to make, is that what if we become the home of Wayfair? That's my question. See what I'm saying? And the stuff is going out of here. That's why I'm asking that question.
That if the states, the state allocation rules are changed within-
Yes, we, because we're trying to encourage people to come here, and so I'm not, I'm using Wayfair, and I probably shouldn't be using it, because I think I'm confusing.
Yeah, because it's a different-
It's the inverse of it. But I'm just concerned about, do, is there anything, other than the Glazer issue coming back? Is there anything that we have to, that we see on the horizon in the way that the rules are being implemented or state tax structure is being discussed right now that poses any risk to the revenue stream we just created?
So the answer is we need to pay attention to all of that legislation with, with our lobbyists helping us to make sure that there is no such risk. I don't know of any right now, but I haven't scrubbed it in that level of detail.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So 2020 is almost here, and as we do our budget cycles in two-year cycles, we should be considering not only 18, 19, but 19, 20 at this time. And I would like council to consider adding exploring ballot measures for the general election in 2020. And among those, one I've been thinking about, and you know, we've, I think we've all been approached by members of the fire department who would like to see a fourth person on an engine, so, one thing I'd like to look at is a public safety parcel tax for 2020, and this can certainly go to committee, but it's something that I, you know, I'm looking at folks. There may be other options that we could explore to get to the same goal, but I want to consider the fact that we have a, as our staff have expressed, a small city staff. So I would like to look at ways of increasing the pie, should we come to the place where we need to increase our expenditures, rather than, you know, trying to fight for what little we have.
Right. Yeah, I hear you, and I was going to say, like, do we want to keep this on here if we don't have like a specific headline tax revenue that we're looking at? But I do think it's really smart to be looking at 2020. Maybe we could more broadly state it as revenue generating ballot measures, and that would open it up to consider other things, like a vacancy tax.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we had talked about a park measure-
Yep.
-as well.
Any other thoughts on that?
That's a great way to put it, is just the category of revenue generating ballot measures.
Okay.
I want to speak to just the specifics of public safety. That is our single largest line item, and so the idea that we can have a more stable revenue stream for covering those costs as we grow, you know, our population is going to spike in the next few years, which means the call for those services, and I think the FTE numbers, we referenced those earlier, I think the ECDC and Parks and Rec came in line somewhere between those two numbers. I'm not sure, I don't know the dates, but I think that really, when we talk about demand for services, it's gone up significantly between those two dates that were picked for the report. So when we talk about stretching city staff, it, it's not even a 1 to 45 or 1 to 75 ratio. It really-
not even a one to 45 or one to 75 ratio, it really is talking about where are we targeting and where are we serving, I mean, I, you know, the, the video had the senior center, the number of people we serve in that center is huge, so when I think about our need for public safety for fire, you know, we're at 30,000 or something in the daytime, we're at 12,000 almost at night, we're just gonna keep spiking in the need for calls, so I just want to support that even more.
Thank you, and I appreciate you bringing up our population growth, and the reason why this is at the forefront of my mind is because of projects like Anni that are coming to town, and if, if, I'm a believer in density and in building more housing, I think it's needed, but as we add that housing, I think we need to consider how we are going to pay for the services that we're gonna need that go alongside that housing.
Thank you, and I just, again, wanna, I don't think I said it clearly, we need to offset the rising costs because they're gonna go up for public safety, no matter what we do, and I don't want that to detract from the other city services that are equally vital and represent a lot of what we do, and so we need to make sure we have that balance, and I, and I'm gonna keep going to the phrase of predictable, we need a predictable funding stream.
I would, I would-
Critical services, sorry.
That's okay, I was, I interrupted you, I apologize, I, I support having a broad discussion, I think that anytime we discuss revenues as it relates to city staffing and the consequential services that come from that, I think we need to take a holistic look at what all the services the city provides are, what, where the needs are and the service gaps exist, and I think we need to create a prioritized list of where those gaps exist, and then look at how we can prioritize revenues, because it's nice to talk about a particular line item that has a future need, and there are items, I believe, that have present needs, and so I would like to make sure that we don't have a discussion that's absent all the other services the city provides that we have to balance in accordance, so I support a broad discussion of all the issues.
Right, yes.
I, I think we shouldn't lose sight of our current income that we have, especially about the hotel tax, that is a significant revenue generator for us, and I think we should see it as an opportunity to, to grow, if we can make our city more interesting on weekends somehow, and I think we could grow our revenue from that source, because our Bay Area tourist community is staying on the weekends in other cities, and I think we could capture some of that, we could have things that don't necessarily cost us that much to attract more people to our city, like for example, the art center will help, having our walkability score go up will help us, but having events, the shortest triathlons and event, we could have other events, just for not much money, we shouldn't lose sight of the cultural side of our city for generating revenue for us, is my only point, so we shouldn't go cheap on our cultural side, because I think that it can be a winner for us.
Okay, um, is there specific language you'd like around that? Because so far, what I got from this discussion is we'd like to discuss kind of ballot measure things that generate revenue, I don't know if that would necessarily be a ballot measure, but maybe just under economic development?
Well, yeah, just under, you know, there, there's sources of revenue, I thought that was this, what we were talking about.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
You may.
Um, I would just like to offer that it also doesn't necessarily have to be a ballot measure, there are other, there are other sources of revenue, and I think the city manager alluded to one of them that I, I've been thinking about, where there are horizons for revenue changes, and when I say revenue changes, I mean the takeaway for us, so we, we get our property tax, and it's subject to, we're paying debt service on redevelopment bonds, and there's a horizon in the debt payment service area where the amount we pay annually out of the share we get towards that debt service will decline, and so I, that's why I'm speaking to this broader perspective, because I think we need to look at where the revenue streams change and the timelines in things that we have already in the system so that we can match those things accordingly, so I would just broaden it beyond ballot measures, because I think we should look at how we allocate money we have.
I agree with that, member Pat, our vice mayor Pat?
So, I want to bring it back around, so I, to the goal discussion, because I think this is the critical piece for tonight, is I, I think we're all in agreement that we have a goal around increasing revenue, recognizing our upcoming challenges and some of our other goals, and member Martinez, did I hear you float the idea of setting up a committee or, or turfing this to a committee, or did I just make that up?
There already is a committee that John and I serve on, that-
That's what I was hinting at. So, I think that would be, for, to me, I think it's just being very clear that we have this goal, and let's bring the committee back, or let's, let's encourage the committee to bring some things back through some target dates throughout the year.
Okay.
To that point, it's an excellent suggestion, I agree with it, but my question, just in terms of implementing that, since you, the last piece was through the year, I think before we just push this out and put it on a budget governance committee agenda at some unknown place in the future, because some of these things and, these ideas, I think, involve existing potential revenue streams, maybe it's in the next two-year budget, maybe it's not, but I would just suggest that if we're going to plan for the future funding of services in the city, we need to examine some of those things concurrent to the current budget, because this budget will go through the 2020 election, so unless we plan on making changes to our budget, if we, if we were to adopt a budget in June, and then in November, we've had as a committee, we come up with some recommendations, I don't want to suggest that anybody here agrees with me, but I personally don't want to revisit the budget to amend the budget if we find things that we want to change at that point, and so, sure, majority of these things can be dealt with through potential ballot measures, and the ballot is an uncertain thing, there's no guarantee that anything we put on it would pass, but at the same time, I don't want to be in a position where we're shortchanging services to the city if there's a potential investment that can be made in the next two-year budget cycle, because we intend to take care of other things we've identified as priorities, either, we're either gonna, you know, let them sit for two years until the next budget cycle, or we're gonna attempt to fund them with a direct funding stream through a ballot measure that will come on the 2020 ballot, right, so there's, I think that there's sequencing of those things to determine how we want to fund things when it comes to allocating general fund, so my, my suggestion is that we should at least ask staff to look at which pieces of this are critically necessary to be evaluated concurrent to this year's budget process, if folks would agree with that, doesn't mean all of it has to be, but maybe some of it should. Does anyone have thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think maybe we could use some of member Pat's, or vice mayor Pat's, sorry, language, to identify new opportunities and upcoming challenges for our budget streams beginning prior to our next budgetary discussions, or as part of our next budgetary discussions, and looking at ballot measures and other economic development tools to meet those needs, does that kind of encompass it all?
Yeah.
Cool, got that?
Did you write it down?
Yeah, I did part of it, all right, so identify new opportunities and challenges with our budget, with respect to our current budget cycle, our upcoming budget cycle, and also identify potential funding streams via ballot measures and other economic development activities.
Could the goal be something around revenue generating ballot measures and other revenue opportunities in the next two-year budget cycle? Evaluate revenue generating ballot measures for 2020 as well as other revenue opportunities within the next two-year budget cycle?
Yes.
Sure. Okay.
Got it.
All right, communications director? We didn't really do anything on that.
I think it's part of the budget process.
Yeah, I think-
You wanted to come off.
Yeah, I have some thoughts that I think you'll appreciate.
That's a first.
Can we go back to disaster preparedness, because I need some burn cream? So, the, I think when we talked about this goal last year, it was based on where we were, and things have significantly shifted, and I always like to leave things, I think at this point, you've had a chance to meet with staff, to talk, to look at our messaging, and I think with a new city manager comes an opportunity to look at what the needs of her staff are, for her, and for you, and so, to me, I think this shouldn't be a council priority, but something we ask you to look at and decide in the budget process, you know, what, whether or not this is a priority, knowing that the council's already said we want to improve our communication, so I would recommend we drop this.
Member Martinez?
Oh, I'm, I'm thinking similarly, I, definitely, when we added this as a priority item, I felt that there was, we were in crisis management mode on a lot of issues, and I think that we're in a much better place, so I would, would like to get our city manager to evaluate, to see if, if this would be a good solution to some, to whatever lingering issues might be addressed by, by having a communications director.
I agree.
What are we agreeing to exactly?
To dropping this off of our-
I disagree, but I'm gonna be the only one probably, I actually think that the city of Emeryville doesn't, are you, do you agree with me, you want to keep it?
Well, I, you know, I would like to look at, what would it do for us? It might put more people in our hotels.
There you are, that hotel tax trap.
I'm just saying.
At least by one.
I mean, here's the, here's the, the idea behind it was a communications director and a PIO, because we had no central point for receiving information in from businesses, other places, and sharing it out with the public, business community felt like there was no direct communication to them, we obviously started the BizNexus projects, but that is not a, that is not a sustained, ongoing communication with the public, people from the public try to use our, I'm not a fan of our website and the services that are, you have to navigate through to find things, people don't feel connected to the community, there are times where we have information we want to share out, and we rely on people who do very little to no research to post things on blogs about what the community's doing, and it's really not the truth, and so people don't know what's going on in this town, and people deserve to just get an accurate, factual understanding of what services the city provides and be able to connect with us in a way that's meaningful, and so I feel that, whether you call it a communications director or not, I think that was the title the prior city manager suggested, I just feel like we don't provide that service, not well, and so whether that means there just needs to be a data or technology increase, staffing change, or an addition of staff, whatever that is, how the role is defined right now, that's the thing, and maybe that can be addressed in the budget, and so it doesn't need to remain a priority, but that's the deficit I see and I still see it.
I think that's what Christian was saying, not that we don't remove the idea at all, but maybe just dropping it from the priority list and considering it as part of the budget, which is what I was agreeing to, not saying definitely don't hire somebody.
Right, I think whether we have the internal capacity to improve those aspects, or we need to bring in a separate position, to me, this goes to what was said earlier about workflow, I know that just means time sheets, but paperless workflow should mean, should be more global, you know, there was something else on there that I enjoyed, you know, there's a lot of things in there, record maintenance and such, that as we go through those structures, should fall under there, because I agree wholeheartedly with what you're saying about, we don't do those things well, and we want to do those well, and so for me, that would be the better goal, is focusing on improving our communication, and, you know, maybe being explicit about some particular things, our website, or social media presence, because I do, I do agree with member Donahue that that does, the better we look on, the better we look on the net, the more likely we are to attract things, but I don't know that we as a council want to say this has to be a person as much as just a goal of, we want what that person would do, done, I think, I think, and back to what the mayor said, you said it really well, that's what the, that's the way the city manager previously operationalized it, is that if we want this done, we need a, we need a body, and I don't know that that is still the case.
All right. So, Madam Mayor, I think, I hear the interest in improving communications with, with the community, I think, as evidenced by the fact that y'all didn't fund the position when you adopted the budget, I think focusing on a position might not be the, the fund position-
This was, the budget was approved in 2017, and this was approved in 2018, there was already a budget in play, we just added it to the list as a priority, there was no supplemental budget discussion.
Right, so, I think the way it was framed at the time might have not allowed the organization to focus on what the goal is, which is to improve communications, so if we can broaden the goal and give us some room to, to look at what the different ways to approach that could be, I think we might be more successful, I think there's gonna be several positions that we'll want to talk to you about in the budget process that address other needs, additional needs for the community that are also currently unfunded for the community and the organization, so if we could focus on the, the need of improving our marketing outreach communications with the community, I think we can think about how we can address that and not necessarily get focused on a position or not a position.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still on, we can consider this in different ways, but maybe not on our top 10 list. Diane?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fine.
We're good with this, okay, well, number 10, or now number nine, minor improvements, small park, Davenport Park, I feel like that's such a smaller thing than the rest of them, it was like, build a whole bridge, and it's like, put a totlot on.
That is one that will carry over for, you funded it this year, but the, the construction would happen next fiscal years, is best we can plan at this point.
I have a suggestion for this one, I think perhaps we could, instead of just focusing on a small park improvement, we have not provided much in terms of parks discussion at all for the city, and we do have agendized a study session coming up to go over parks, could we perhaps broaden this to saying improving parks and livability in Emeryville?
I totally support that, but if I recall, we had a, and maybe I'm mixing this up with our CIP priorities, but I thought this was our catch-all for a lot of the things, seeing Chad nod, which always makes me happy, that I got it right, that it was a catch-all, like lights, bathrooms, things like that, it wasn't about, I mean, to me, Davenport Park.
Oh, you didn't say that right, Ron.
I was close, Davenport Park came significantly after this goal-setting thing, it wasn't even part of our goal, so I, I was confused when I saw that on here-
Yeah.
-as, you know, and Andrew, I'm sorry, you're gonna speak, so go ahead.
It's what you adopted in March of 2018, the line item was minor improvements, small park, Davenport Park, so I'm not sure if it got narrowed down.
I can tell you what the context was, that, this was a request, when we did this process last year, I asked every council member to come with their list of things, and we then prioritized the list, we saw how many people wanted to do each of the things, this was council member Donahue's suggestion, he, he identified small parks as something, parklets and opportunities for pocket parks, and particularly, it became Davenport Park after a discussion was had, but the idea was that there, and we made a budget policy change consistent with this point, this particular item this year, so the prior issue was people would come to us with a suggestion, like a totlot, or exercise equipment at Stanford Park, things like that were brought to us, we were receiving these requests, and they weren't in the CIP, but they were things that neighborhoods identified as really easy, small, fiscally small compared to some of the larger CIP items, things that people would want that would make an impact immediately on livability, and so we, we coalesced around that idea, it got added to the list with the, the idea being that if there was something that was identified that we could do easily, or there was capacity to do it, fit it into an agenda, because something else came off, we would put it there, so Davenport Park became kind of the first of those examples, and then at the Budget Governance Committee last year, we recommended a change to the commercial transfer tax budget policy, so we have a $2 million in the two-year period that we, we put aside and we put into the CIP, and then we divided the half into 50%, everything above the $2 million budgeted amount, 50% goes to pay down unfunded liabilities, and the other 50% goes to have the council spend on discretionary projects that was linked back to this, so that's, so yeah, so that's just for the benefit of the public, that's what the goal was on this, and so this was something that council member Donahue asked for, and so I just would ask him if this still fulfills the purpose of that or what.
Well, yeah, it's just, opportunities come to us, you know, from unexpected places in our city, and if we just have some bit of budget in place for it, we can very nimbly take advantage of this and make our city more livable at, not to, you know, it's not a big project, but you know, sometimes small things really make a difference, so, you know, we could just keep some part of our budget that could allow for this, I just think that it'll, it'll serve our city well in the long run.
So, we've already made that budget policy change, right? So, we now, we've accomplished the goal that you brought for last year. We have that reserved. So, do we want to keep this on here? Do we want to change it into something else?
Well, it's yours, it was your suggestion. Here's what I'd suggest. If we want to take it off the list as a goal, what we could ask for instead is that there be an ongoing item that's either once annually, probably, where staff presents to us how much money is in the fund where we have banked the money that's discretionary to spend, and what kind of requests have come into staff that might be appropriate for that expenditure. So, if we want to do something, we can once a year sit down and do that, but it probably doesn't need to be a goal going on.
Or included in the CIP process, which you adopt every two years.
Exactly. To take something that's not immediate.
Okay, that seems like a great approach to it.
I like that. Let's do that. All right.
So much better for priorities.
What?
Eight, better than nine in priorities.
Yeah, eight is a lot smoother to work with here. Okay, so those were all of our priorities last year. We've kept eight of 10, and you have provided us with this lovely shades of blue chart. Do we want to go through each section and see if we want to adopt these suggestions? Or how about we start with, does anyone else have anything that's not on this that you really want to see in our goals that we don't have?
I have one item, but I don't know if it's more appropriate as a budget item or what. I think it's a budget item, but I just want to ask the city manager and the council whether they think it's appropriate for here or not. The item I have is code enforcement, and I just think that there's, we've identified this in the past as a place where there's a need for staffing. The city has grown, there's a number of regional issues tied to code enforcement. Code enforcement implicates police services greatly, it implicates public works, it has impacts on community development. So, it's taxing staff, and it's putting burdens on staff that could be and should be dealt with more regularly through a code enforcement process. So, rather than public works going out repeatedly to abate something, or police time being dedicated to addressing a derelict building that has a public safety connection to it, I just think that we need to do something about that, and that's, needs to be a priority. And so, I don't know if we want to just talk about that in the budget, or if we want to actually talk about ways to make code enforcement a priority for the community, but I'm just lifting that up now as my one thing this year.
No, I want to support that. I think it might be more appropriate for the budget process.
Yeah, maybe.
And in light of the accounting of the organic wastes that we're going to have to do, starting in 2019, 2020, there's so many, yeah, so many areas that code enforcement touches. I support this wholeheartedly, but maybe not as a priority.
I also agree kind of with the budget. Yeah?
So, first of all, I want to second the idea of code enforcement, because I share member vouchers' concerns, and actually would love to see it as a priority on this goals of the council, just because it's already kind of in the budget, but I think it is, we need to say, look, code enforcement's a priority for the council, we want to see it, we want to have reports out on it, things like that. So, I'd love to see that as priority number nine. When I look at, what you call it, the multi-shades of blue? When I look at that quickly, I think we've covered everything on there, with the exception of the, with the exception of the penultimate and ultimate boxes, budget is always on there, so I don't think we need to make that a, one of our 10 goals, if we're going to get back to 10, because we're at nine in my mind now. But the last one, the one that I think was most staff-generated, is something that I've been talking about both with the city manager and with the staff directly, this idea of cultivating a healthy organization, building capacity for excellent service. And I think I mentioned this back in December, I would like to start having an inward-facing goal. So, to take those ideas and add in, you know, I think cultivate a healthy organization, be a model employer, and build capacity for excellent service would be what I would recommend for our 10th goal, with the idea that encompasses these things, and a focus in on, you know, employee retention, employee happiness, wellness, and really all the things that go into a healthy organization. And, you know, we talk about all these policies we've had to the community about being good employers, we want to make sure that we are a model of good employment. And so, that would be my suggestion, is goal nine from our list is, you know, let's have an emphasis on code enforcement this year, and every year thereafter, and all that that entails. And then 10, our goal is to be a great employer with a healthy organization and capacity for excellent service. So, that's my suggestion.
Okay. Member Donahue?
I'm open to that.
We appreciate that about you.
You should do stand-up comedy.
I just, city manager, is this exactly as goal-setting goes in every city?
I'm having so much fun.
This is just the model for goal-setting, I think.
Madam Mayor, with regard to the code enforcement discussion, if I could just address that briefly.
Yeah.
As all of you well know, we don't have a funded position to do that work. We don't have a, I should say, a funded designated position to do that work. So, that work is taken in, and it's distributed among staff in a very informal way, and they do, I think, a remarkable job trying to figure out which person can catch the juggling ball and try to figure out the solution to the problem. So, I would suggest that this is really a budget discussion, because if you are making this a priority and we don't have designated staff, that could be a challenge. So, I think we need to bring it up during the budget and talk about what that means in terms of resource allocation. I would also say that we agree it's definitely necessary, but I see it as more of a conversation that needs to happen during this budget discussion that's upcoming.
I'm inclined to agree with the budgetary approach to it, but I think you've gotten some traction.
I agree with that. It just seems like we're not a big enough city to have it be a separate department, and it just seems like...
I'd like to see it in the priorities, because your budget is built on your priorities.
That was going to be my comment, is that if you have 10 priorities and you're building the budget, and you see that as a priority, it's really going to, it should really inform things. And I'll go back to the communications director position, we built the budget first and then made it a priority. It didn't happen. And now, we're doing the priorities first, we build the budget, and it doesn't happen, then we have a different conversation.
Okay.
And I understand and appreciate that, as long as what the goal is, is to build the program that doesn't currently exist.
Yes, that is the goal. Right at the goal, just like that. Build a program that doesn't exist. That's how strongly I feel about it.
And I support that 100%, so I'm looking for a third.
Yeah, I think that kind of ties into the building organizational capacity as well, if this is pulling from staff's other work, because they have to be pulled into doing this.
Great way to frame it.
Yeah.
Capacity for excellent service.
Yes, Member Martinez?
I just wanted to remark on Vice Mayor Patz's, he keeps bringing up wanting to be a model employer, and I think that's a really great aspiration for a city. We ask so much of our employees, and we know that you wear many hats, and Christine is actually a really good advocate for you guys. She tells me every time I meet with her how much you all are doing, and one of the first things that she discovered when she got here was that there is zero redundancy, and we're well aware of that. So, I think investing in our employees and making sure that they're happy here is really important. So, thank you for adding that.
Thank you.
I agree that we really should be excellent employers, and I think that the, having a separate position might not be a good idea. Maybe we need to hear what our staff thinks of it, and whether, maybe they think that juggling various code enforcement issues between them is the way to go. So, I don't think we should take that position on high, I think we should listen to our staff.
Get some facial reactions on that one. Navarro can still see you. Yes, Member Martinez?
So, I just wanted to, my watch is telling me I need to stand up and move a little. I just wanted to remark on two other items that were, the city manager put on the shades of blue list. Not the sexiest items, but they're items that are very important to me. Library services, that's a promise that was made to the community some time ago, and they rightfully have expectations, so that's something we're going to come through on. And then corp yard remediation. Christine touched on the fact that the toxic waste at our corp yard is not only holding up development of that property, but of multiple other properties, and in the end, is stopping affordable housing from being built. So, this is the legacy of redevelopment and cleaning up brownfields and just wrapping up the very good job that city staff and former councils began many, many years ago. So, I hope that we can see some closure on the corp yard in the near future.
On goal number three on our document, not on the multi-blue thing, the active transportation safety, are we looking to add things to that now? Or we took a bunch of them off, I heard, right? We kept some on. Is the goal today to add them to that, to let you know what those things are? Is it sufficient to say that the Transportation Committee would like the council in the near future to discuss additional transportation safety items? Because I know we've talked about a couple at our last meeting, and we just, I just want to flag that for this agenda item.
Well, note that we recommended 40th Street redesign be one of your priorities, but Andrew, do you have additional?
I think if you've identified this as a priority, that will be sufficient for now in that there's a B-PAC wish list we have in the capital improvement plan, you know, implementation of some of the pedestrian and bicycle improvements, and there are some other projects which are in there which are also consistent with this goal.
Okay, thank you.
And we added in connectivity, looking at the multimodal connectivity, which I think a lot of what we've been discussing.
Yeah.
It's right under that.
Thank you.
So, that encapsulates that. God damn it. We have moved from a special meeting to a standing meeting.
Should do stand-up together.
Madam Mayor, if you'd like, we can take what we've heard tonight and put that into a document similar to what you had last year, and we can bring that back at a future meeting and schedule it for adoption, if that would be something that you'd be interested in.
Okay. Do we feel like, I mean, do you feel like we have given you 10? Or, because I know we kind of stopped at 10, and then Member Martinez mentioned a couple of other things. So, do we want to do broad categories, like this matrix of blue, or do we want to list it out, like, one through 10 or 12?
So, I appreciate Member Martinez pointing out particularly the corp yard remediation, but I feel like that's part of our housing goal, priority, because it is one of the biggest dominoes that has to go. Sorry, that was priority two of the bond measure, I see, okay. And it's also a big part of our ROPS. And so, I don't know if we want to put that as a council standalone item on our list of 11, and it'd be awesome if we went to 11. But...
It's always...
It's not going to go away.
It's not, that's what I'm saying, is it seems to me to be...
Definitely not what that is true.
And then, the same thing with the library services, while I appreciate the commitment. I think we've got, I don't know that we're there this year with all that's going on to talk about the library, and it's, and clearly, we haven't forgotten about it. So, I don't know, I don't know that I want to add it on as number 11.
I don't want to call it a priority, but I will say that it must be dealt with in the budget this year. Having worked a lot on the budget last year, I can tell you that one of the sleeping issues the city really needs to address, actually, is the amount of money we pay for a library contract to Oakland. It doesn't exist, there's no contract.
I don't disagree with you.
Need to deal with it.
So, this is not an inconsequential item in terms of the time it will take to figure out something like this? So, it would be helpful to know, is it a priority or not a priority?
I still would like it to be a priority, but if...
I agree with, I agree with Diane. Just putting it this way, there's, just as a reminder, there's no written contract for the library, for what we pay, okay? There is, Oakland has been saying they're going to dramatically increase the amount that they request. We have a facility that was promised to the community, as Diane noted, to build out a library. We need to repurpose the money before it becomes a larger obligation to something that actually meets the community's needs. So, I think we need to have a plan for this soon.
I agree with that.
This is a lingering budget problem.
Yeah, and I think that if we don't take action, we'll be losing money. And we said we'd do it as a part of our original building out of the Center for Community Life, so I think we have to do it soon.
I think we're not there yet, and I don't know that it's a priority for me. I hear you with the Oakland increase, but I think that's a separate issue. I think the increase in costs for our continued use, and it's interesting to me what we get out of that paid cost, but that's a discussion for a different day, versus us saying, okay, let's get a library up and running at the ECL. I think that's at least two years out, and so I don't see it, something that's two years out, while I know that's this budget cycle and all that, I don't know that that's a priority for me.
Can I ask why you see it as two years out?
You can. There's a lot that goes into the library, and I think that the site itself is not ready for one more program to be added there. There's some flow issues, there's some space issues, the promise of a library and what was delivered in space, to me, I don't know that we've had anybody actually go in and look at it and what it entails. I don't even know that we've talked to the community about what they want in a library. So, to me, there's a lot of studying that needs to be done, and a lot of negotiating with the school that needs to be done to figure out how we're going to make that a library for the community.
I've got a couple questions. Can you read through which priorities you have quickly, so I make sure I'm on the same page as you here?
South Bayfront Bridge, housing bond expenditure plan, and one idea would have the corp yard remediation as part of that work for housing. Active transportation safety, multimodal connectivity, 40th Street redesign would fit under that. The Art Center, disaster preparedness, parking management, rail safety and quiet zones, revenue generating ballot measures for 2020, and other revenue opportunities within the next two-year budget cycle. Improving communications with the community. Cultivate a healthy organization and be a model, cultivate a healthy organization, be a model employer, and build capacity for excellent service, and building a code enforcement program would be under that. And then, library services.
Okay. I did not have improved communications as one of our priorities. I thought we had agreed to put that under the budget.
We agreed to put it in the budget.
So, we're back to 10.
Okay. And so, code enforcement goes under healthy organization, which I like. All right, so we're at 10. In terms of staff capacity, because I think, you know, we've heard, we understand this is a lean organization, do you think if we add, we want to prioritize library services, we can meaningfully get a lot done on that this year, or, and how much will that detract from our other goals that we have up here?
One of the things we're looking at right now is reaching out to the Alameda County Library and seeing if they would give us a proposal to see what it would take to bring in a library. So, that's one option we're looking at. It is going to take probably a committee to discuss with the school district, the impacts of having a community library and how that's going to look. So, there has to be some legwork done into that and decide what hours of operation we're looking at, and then what that cost could be overall.
Okay, and that would be done primarily under your department, I'm assuming?
Yes, we have been working with them lately.
He and I are working on it together.
And is your department, because I do like about this matrix that you kind of put in which responsible departments on there, are a lot of these other things requiring your department total resources, or have we not really asked that of you yet?
Library services is the one, and the other one is helping out with Davenport Park, which we've done with community meetings and different aspects, or any other part we can help out to move that project along.
Do you think you have the capacity to get some progress made of the library this year if we prioritize it?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'm fine with adding it to our list. Make it 11. Why not?
It was the 10th one.
Oh, it's the 10th?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm so happy, thank you.
I wanted 11.
Too bad.
So, we'll be happy to write this up and bring this back to the council?
Great.
All right.
Excellent. I guess we don't get to ask for future agenda items since it's a special meeting, but seems like, does anyone have any final comments?
Do you want to open it up to the public again, since there are folks who've been here for the whole time?
Yeah, come comment. Anyone?
If you want.
No, you have to, you're here.
Since you've sat it out. All right, seen none, then, yes?
So, are we going to re-prioritize, or are we going to leave them in the order they are now?